Call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So add to the agenda to make the appointment for the emergency management committee for 2022-2023 reappointment form. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the change?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review of the minutes from October 24th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
No move.
For a second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Is there a motion to approve the November 7th, 2022 special meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any open public comment? Nobody's on.
Anybody on this microphone?
Nobody.
Guests? No guests? You're guests, buddy. Yeah, really guests.
Different kind of guests.
That's right. All right. Any good stuff?
Weather's been great, saving me money on fuel oil, so I'm happy.
Saving us money on fuel too, probably. All right. Okay, Highway Department. Beaver Pond Path update.
So we've got, this is our first budget meeting, so I'm gonna just try to highlight the bigger points of each of these line items. We met with a landowner along the Beaver Pond Trail on a special meeting last week, and then we plan on hopefully meeting with all of the landowners at our next meeting. I think a few board members wanted it to be a little bit sooner than that, but Judy Taranovic has some recovery that she has to go through after surgery. So I'll reach out to Omya, Frank, and Judy has already told us that she can make the meeting on the 28th, I believe it is. So that's where we're at with the Beaver Pond Path.
South Street Sidewalk Project.
And then you have an updated South Street project schedule in your packet. The right-of-way phase should start in December.
That's nice.
Hopefully it moves faster than the bike path.
It's already on track.
All right. Anything else under Highway? Anybody have questions? Is there a motion to go out of the Select Board meeting into the Board of Water Commissioners?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Collection Committee draft minutes.
All right, and just as an update, Phil Anderson has thrown in the meeting. So, all right, so our next meeting falls right along the holiday, our next Select Board meeting is right after holidays. I'll try my best to get a detailed report to you, but we can't make any shut-offs anyway, so it'd most likely be totals. I'm working with STAR on keeping track of delinquency reports now to make sure people are current. We went through that practice today, and as spring approaches, the idea is for the Collection Committee to have some type of policy in place for us to follow so we can start our disconnects and any other procedures that have been outlined in that policy.
Gormbridge Water Project completion.
So really good news, the project is complete. One Gormbridge was not connected to the new line along Gormbridge because their plumbing was really old and outdated inside the house, and there was concern if we did change things, change it to a newer line, that it could disrupt plumbing inside the home. It was kind of one of those "if it ain't fixed, don't broke it" kind of deal, so we still have a single line going to them from the rear, which is disconnected from everyone else. So if there's ever problems with that line in the future, instead of having to tear through the woods to make repairs, that would be the day when we would want to most likely look at the investment of tying them on the front.
So could that, they could still be disconnected if they had to be?
Yes.
Okay. Field Street Wellhouse Pump Repair Update.
Aldrich and Elliott came to the pump station last week and gathered their appropriate documents to start assessing the system. They'll monitor the station remotely, but I do just want to put it on your radar. They are our on-call engineers, but if they have to do some bigger level monitoring, we want to enter into some type of formal agreement so there's a cap on what the expense of that would be. Hopefully they go back and tell me in the next couple of weeks what it is, and it's simple, but if not, I'll make sure to give you that update, and again, we can just work through a formal agreement with them to find the problem.
Any questions? All right. The O&M Manual Update.
In order to finalize the O&M, the Operations and Maintenance Manual for the water system, so if, let me, I'm gonna jog our memories here. About six months ago, we entered into an agreement with DuBois and King to answer some questions that the state had, and they've done that, and they've submitted it all. The requirements for finalizing the O&M manual and gaining permits for the system is that we have to finish the abandonment project, and there's one left, and that's 8B, which is the disc, which is cutting and capping a few lines across rivers and creeks and a few roads. We also have to complete, we also have to find a solution for the hydrant next to the garage that John Corliss attempted to replace last year, but it didn't work. So, and actually Josh Webb and I spoke a little bit about that on election night, on a few potential solutions. The state's convinced that it needs to be upsized to, the main line needs to be upsized to an eight-inch going to that pipe, but there's, we think there might be other solutions for it that we can explore. So just want to put that on your radar, that those are going to be prioritized very high going into summer so that we can finalize that permit for the field abandonment project.
Paul Bart, do you know how many feet away we are from a larger main? Hundred, three hundred?
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred? Is that all right?
I don't know. Wasn't that what we talked about, Josh? Yeah, that's what I remember.
So does that mean that that eight-inch pipe has to be replaced on that distance?
It's a four-inch going there now.
Right.
Yeah.
So why would we place two eight?
Yeah.
Maybe that whole entire length?
I guess maybe we can explore the idea of turning it into a flushing hydrant or moving it closer up the road.
We talked about taking it away from the garage a distance and pushing it back up the street a good distance to a shorter distance.
Oh, okay.
Basically, one, if that garage ever does know, we are not going to be able to use that hydrant there anyways, it's going to be heat exposure. And two, we carry over a thousand feet under this one, we're approximately five inches to one end.
So those two projects will be prioritized for the summer. Yeah, that's the update.
Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewerage Commissioners?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Willow Sewer Project Completion, which you already?
So I sent Kyle down to the Garden of Eden this morning to remove silt fence, and he couldn't find any. So it's a lose, and he came Friday and took it all out there themselves.
Wow.
And he didn't call for help?
No, so we thought we'd have to, you know, provide some equipment or something. It's all taken care of. So following that, project's complete. And the pay app, the pay app's included in your packet, and that's the final pay app. Oh, yeah. Excellent.
Okay, ESA for the wastewater treatment plant update.
I threw this under Board of Sewerage Commissioners just because it's relative, but then Engineering Services Agreement is still under review by the state, although we are, we, the engineers would like to move forward with the Step One loan application, which is just the scoping study that sets you up, puts you into the funding pool, and we'll discuss that later on in the, in the meeting during the discussion actions portion.
Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewerage Commissioners and back to the Select Board meeting? Second? All in favor?
Is it possible we could move the Fire Department thing up?
I was actually just gonna say, this is my manager's report. If anybody has any questions about it, they can ask, but we can do it either way.
Well, when we do the budget, are we just gonna jump to fire and do the others' updates after? Or the review after? Is there any question on the manager's report? Did everyone got the audit report in your packet?
Yes.
All right. Everybody signed the bills, correct?
Yes.
Any questions on the sheriff's report? Do you want to do the salt bids first now?
Yeah, we can do the salt bids now. It's pretty quick and dirty. I went out for three from Cargill and Appalachia and American Rock Salt. The reason they're so late is because we've been sitting idle for the state contract, and I reached out to Brian Sanderson two weeks ago, and it still wasn't finalized, and he told me he'd reach out to me when it was, and I haven't heard from him yet. So most towns just took the liberty to go out and get bids independently, and that's what we've done here. And I believe you've got the breakdown there on your, in your packets.
So everybody sees Cargill came in at $85.50 per ton. Estimated tons, 850. Total cost, $72,675.
Make a motion to accept Cargill's bid?
Want me to read the other bid? Lisa, did you want it for minutes?
I have it.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to approve Cargill to award them the road salt contract for the fiscal year 2023. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right.
Just do the last couple of motions and then.
All right, there is a Clean Water Planning Loan Application for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades. Is there a motion to apply for a Step One Clean Water Loan to perform a preliminary engineering study on the condition and needs of the town's wastewater treatment plant?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just so you know, the loan is subsidized, so the cost's really only half of the $19,800.
Just for your information, our liners are at the end of the, beyond the end of there.
And some of the UV, UV lights need to be upgraded too. Not the lights, but the components, the power, the lights, I suppose.
General upgrade. Two or three million dollars.
Not much.
Next year's budget. All right. We want to authorize the town manager to sign the wastewater treatment plant upgrades with ESA following state approval. Is there a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the Engineering Services Agreement for the wastewater treatment facility upgrades following the state's review and approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, General Fund Fiscal '24 Budget Review and Fire Department Equipment Request. So everybody got all the numerous folders?
Yes.
Sorry about that, but.
Oh, thanks.
There's a lot to this. So we'll start with the easy one. They request to place a communications tower upon the building next to the water tank called Franklin's.
No.
East side, sorry.
East side.
We're just looking for approval to have it placed. We have received our grant from Warner Proctor to pay for it.
That's easy.
Yes.
Is there a motion to allow them to install the radio repeater? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would our town radios be able to use that too?
No, it's specific to one channel. It's actually our channel to improve our communications. But it's designed to kind of help us out with everything going on in the state.
Yes, the radio, yes.
But that, quite obviously, the pricing on it is a lot less than we need.
Yes.
That's not a bad price. That's, if they're having trouble communicating, it might be worth looking into.
Doesn't that also eliminate you guys having to purchase new radios? Because this can kind of, doesn't?
That, or we've held off on doing any of that to determine what the state's gonna do and what we have to wait for dispatching down the road. They go along a digital system. We don't want to jump the gun and buy you a radio now and then just have to replace it in two to three years. Most of ours are bought for 10 to 15 years, so. Kind of holding off on that expense, depending on for sure.
We've had pretty, most of ours are older now. They're a grand part of it.
All right. Next, the truck replacement?
Yes. So we've been meeting since March trying to come up with a truck that will actually meet local needs. We are talking about taking and replacing our tractor one and our engine two to 2041. So it's kind of going to be a truck that's blended to do both jobs. There's just not enough money in the budget to realistically replace both trucks with individual trucks. The need's not there for one of each to have combos kind of the way to do it. So what we did, we actually sat down with Garth Brooks, who's a source of sales, which is even one, it's a manufacturer we're dealing with for decades now. We actually purchased sort of the five to one amount there.
And all those times you've gone with Garth Brooks, so he's the one?
He's one. Danny Source used to be owner of the business.
Okay.
His retirement, Garth has taken over for him.
Okay.
We sat down, we designed a truck to meet our needs for 20 to 25 years. We were thinking, which one is the beautiful five-year truck? Unfortunately, as you saw, when the prices came back, what is the best need is just as an optimal one is develop price increases and replacing another one from end of December. That's why we designed on a commercial chassis truck instead to see if we could try to bring it down. There are some concerns of going from a custom to a commercial chassis. One of the big ones being longevity. Commercial chassis trucks are typically a 10-15-year truck or a 20-25-year truck. We'll do the job initially, yes, but it doesn't help if it doesn't last. We would like to be able to, but if, as I said, budget dictates, well, we can get it.
So then what you're looking at is the bottom line here for the commercial E? The price is $576,399 or the $508,946?
The $576 is the manufacturer's suggested retail. Garth has come back at a bid price of $508. That does not reflect trade values on the two trucks that we'd be trading.
Now, those trade values that he gave you, are those like in stone? Like, I mean?
That's based upon what he looked at on that day.
So you could be shy almost $100,000?
We're sitting in a replacement fund at the end of this coming financial year at about $450,000. So we have a little luxury flexibility depending on value. Garth did seem to think the tanker may go for a little bit more with all the time he gets a chance to start listing it. The downfall being is what today's prices are, the liquid price 27 months from now could change, conditions of trucks change. Unfortunately, the tanker being a 91, it's a fair range.
And the difference here, if you look at the commercial cab, there's a big difference between a commercial cab and a custom cab. Big, number one in my book is crash safety. The custom player, the design and engineer can be an emergency response vehicle. With a roll cage in it, it has crash safety. It has one warranty. If we go with commercial cab, we have two different warranties to deal with. We're going from, if we go with the commercial, we go from eight seats down to two. We're moving to six seats, we stay with the custom, or we go to two seats.
But the benefit of a commercial is, is actually cost savings.
Cost savings.
Not only price-wise, but when things go wrong with it. Because it's a lot easier to find parts for a commercial vehicle than it is a custom made.
No.
Well, you can find them, but it's gonna cost you a lot more.
Because they're coming through with a true Cummins motor that we can actually get serviced right over here if it's turned all the time.
All right, because the more bells and whistles, I know, the more things break, things cost a lot more.
Truck itself is. We've had a custom, the custom chassis since 1993 when we bought the first one. And they, well, the one we got now is 20 years old and looks brand new and runs brand new. That's.
So you're looking to go for the commercial though, you said?
If we have to budget wise, yes. It is not the preferred option.
Can you tell us what the number was for the commercial? I'm guessing the $508 was the commercial, but what was the custom number?
$896,821, manufacturer suggested retail, $697,900 is the bid we came back with.
$697,110.
Nine, ten.
Nine, ten.
Nine, ten. And that's 20 to 25 years, and the other one's 10 to 15?
That's the realistic, like it's.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So would we get these trade-ins before you purchased this?
No, we would get them at the time of trade-in trucks.
You'd actually get, you'd trade them into the same place?
Yes. When he comes down and delivers the new truck, he takes the other ones.
So that's what he's willing to give you then for them?
Yeah, he holds out on how long he does it.
Anybody have questions? Comments?
Was that the commercial? Or custom?
That was the custom bid price.
The custom bid.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
I mean, I think you're well off if you get what he's saying he'd give you and then what you have in the reserve fund to cover it. I mean, if you move commercial.
The other thing we have to think about as we move more possible commercial development here is they're gonna look at our equipment for their insurance rates. That's the other, that's the other thing that we brought into our thought process with the custom truck is if somebody's trying to come in here for commercial development, we're looking at what we have for equipment sitting in the building. And that's going to directly affect their insurance rates depending on what we have sitting here.
Any questions?
Are you looking for us to put it on the March ballot or to come up with the money or?
Well, we're looking for guidance on which one you'd like us to go. It's why we come before the board, before we proceed any further with anything. It takes, you know, six to, six months to a year to design it. And then from there, it's anywhere from 22 to 27 months once we place an order, even get the truck. And it doesn't matter if it's a commercial or a custom.
And the prices are jumping.
So we've had price increases just through the bid process, and there's another large one coming again in the summer.
Because price is going to be sold on Sunday.
Midnight, Sunday.
Yeah, this reserve fund is for these purposes.
Right. Well, I mean, it, to me, it's kind of, I mean, if the reserve funds cover it and the trade-in, then you're covered. There's nothing else to, you know, worry about. Otherwise, where do you come up with $197,000 for the difference?
Well, has the ARPA money been definitively given to the sewer? So ARPA money is still on the table?
It is.
That's, that's part of our, the discussion we had is, is at one point, our equipment fund was at $90,000 a year, and it was, it was caught by the previous county managers without any input from us. And we spent a long time to develop that equipment fund, projecting what costs may be. So we, you know, we're down probably $120,000 in that fund right now because of that.
And one of the things we have to look at is after the purchase of this truck is finalized and delivered, we have to replace all air packs because we've lived the expectancy of 15 years. That's another $170,000 that has to be accounted for.
How many were you looking to purchase?
Trucks?
No, air packs.
Air packs will be, depending on which truck we go with, will fluctuate. We could go with a custom, it's gonna have to go up to 15 air packs to cover the seats that are in the truck for an equity requirements. If it goes to a commercial, we can stay with the 14 that we currently have. We shall place the existing.
And did we get like bids from anybody on those? Or did you price out those from different vendors?
Not yet, because we're still two years out before we need to place an order, so pricing has been unfortunate and fluctuating. We've been told by different vendors, $7,000 to $10,000 per air pack plus an additional bottle that's required. But until we're ready for. But until we're ready for it, they will give us a free price.
Because I know we, we were looking into getting those in the city, and we were paying sixty-six hundred each, for each one.
If, if it was something, if it was something you were seeking a motion for, and I know that you said that the bids are only valid till Sunday, would it be, would it be a real challenge to extend, extend that to the end of the month, or?
The only thing I've gotten from the dealer, I've kind of been in contact, is that he's already told me that he expects before the first, that they'll see at least three percent increase.
December first?
Or January first.
Oh, January first.
Yeah.
We can reach out to the vendor and see if they'll honor it or not.
Yeah, I hate, you know, not trying to be a buzzkill, because I know how these go. It is kind of nice, it is always nice, and I could have brought this up when we spoke before, but it's always kind of nice to introduce, I think, an idea like this. If they've had a meeting and then maybe approved it, had a second meeting, and have to have a little bit of time to digest the information, but that's just my opinion.
Do they ask that fast?
Yeah, I can see your point in, you know, going with the, with the custom certainly, but.
I feel like we're kind of stuck. If all we can afford is commercial, then how do we go to custom? That's my question.
Well, we have ARPA money.
We do, and I was about to kind of touch on that before we move forward on it. I, I have kind of, I haven't presented it yet. It was going to be kind of somewhat part of this budget process. But I've, I've taken the V-Trans projects we have going on now, Beaver Pond, whether it's complete or not at this point, we've got, we kind of know how much it's going to cost. And then the South Street Sidewalk. Neither one of those projects are budgeted for or bonded. So, I feel like it would be wise to maybe use ARPA to fund those instead of taking out a loan, or including it into the general fund budget, which you wouldn't really do anyway, because it's not operations and maintenance. But then that does leave you, you know, so let's, I'm just going to throw a flat number out there. We, about five hundred thousand, let's, let's just, it, it's around, it's like four hundred some thousand dollars that we have for ARPA. So, even if you funded those two capital improvement projects that I just mentioned, you'd still have about two hundred thousand some odd dollars left over. That hasn't been allocated, which we talked about putting towards the wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
So, would you be willing, if you went back to the vendor, to see if you could hold off till December one, and then, and then let us know, like ASAP? And then we could always do a special meeting this week if we, if he said no. Because then we could do a special meeting before Sunday.
And I guess just to be clear, and this could be my fault, I didn't understand it. Are, are you looking for the, the commercial or the custom? Which ones do you, which one do you guys lean in towards?
The custom, just based upon longevity, relatively in budgeting, it's going to be a twenty-five year truck, which is, unfortunately, it will be re-certified in a twenty-year mark, so.
So even though it's customized, it's not going to have all the bells and whistles of some firetruck?
No, no, it's, it's, it pretty much is, is, I mean, it's got, it's got a couple of small bells and whistles on it. It's got three sides to dump, which it's replacing our tanker. We're replacing two trucks at the moment.
Right. And then the biggest change, the biggest difference in it is the safety.
The safety, for my personal opinion, it's a safety unit. A custom truck.
A chassis, basically.
It is designed and engineered from where the tires meet the pavement to the top of the truck, it'd be an emergency response vehicle. It's engineered that way. It's, it's not designed to be a dump truck or a delivery truck like a commercial cab is. It's designed to be a firetruck, except for braking on it. It's got, like I said, a roll cage in it.
When they go, they actually literally respect every inch, everything, right down to the frame areas they use to go the truck.
And there was, there was an instance up north a few years ago where a, where a truck got forced over a firetruck, and it actually went into the ditch cap first. No fault of the driver's, because it was a slash folder. And I happen to know the trooper that investigated that, and he said if, if it hadn't been a custom cab, the passenger would have been dead.
Okay, so is everybody wanting to wait till he hears back, if we could hold on?
Yes, that would be.
And if anybody has questions about the specs, I mean, if you're looking them over, and you don't want to quietly public it, but if you don't know what something is, you reach out to one of us and ask us if you want to look them over, and we can explain what that spec is.
Yeah.
Or what something means on it.
Yeah, that'll give us a little extra time, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. No.
Are you guys staying for your budget, or no? We could jump to fire, can't we?
Yeah, we can do it. It's one of our bigger ones, too, so we can, you know, knock it off.
Can you talk about page number?
Uh, that is a... I'm cheating with an Excel spreadsheet. Somebody will get to it before I will.
Department forty-five.
Thank you. Uh, page numbers are.
Eight of eleven.
Eight of eleven.
Page eight.
I don't have page numbers. Oh, there it is, on top, that's one.
Yeah.
I used to have headings.
Well, I remember last year, my first presentation didn't have page numbers on it, so I adapted. And included in, in your budget, I've, I've put somewhat of a memo, and in that memo, I've explained some, some of the formatting. Anything over two thousand dollars, I'm considering a red flag number, just because we don't have the, the most enormous municipal general fund budget in the world. So, anything over two thousand has been highlighted in, in red. And of that, you, you've got a direct labor line item increase, a vehicle expense repair increase, and equipment reserve fund increase.
So the overall budget's just increased sixteen thousand, twenty-four fifty, correct?
That is correct.
I'm just gonna, just curious, we've held pretty level on the direct labor line at thirteen thousand. That's what it was for actual fiscal twenty-two, but we went up two thousand for fiscal twenty-four for the budget.
The cost of everything.
Just inflation?
Inflation, the amount of gas that everybody's had to spend the money on this year just to get to the station.
Yep.
Now, at this point, we're pretty fortunate as a department, because we have not seen the health issues. And I want to try to keep that by retaining the membership that we do have.
And you're still at the twenty-three, right?
Yeah, to twenty-six. We have twenty active interior firemen to support people and for gas.
Okay. Anybody have questions on anything, any particular line?
And the increase on the equipment reserve is to get back to what you had been doing in the past.
Yeah, this, if this purchase goes through, it'll just about deplete the reserve fund. Do you think we'll have vehicle expense repairs like we did last year, or was that something?
I hope it needs to be down. You had a few things that went wrong last year, you have, or one of those, hopefully.
Well, I mean, you guys still did good in, in twenty twenty-two, because that did go over a bit, but we, you know, you kept everything down low enough to where your, your overall just was, just a couple hundred over budget.
Failed last year, that was a little six thousand dollars to replace. Hopefully, we get another ten years out of that one without an issue.
Josh, was that radio repeater anywhere in here, like under communications, or? No? Okay. So that's separate?
That's more of a roster.
No, our radio is for just the programming and replacement of the pagers and any parts and pieces that we need to keep stuff going.
Okay.
The downfall is pagers are running five twenty-nine again this year.
With cell phones, I'm just curious, why do you still use pagers?
Because cellphone service is not reliable enough to have. Because we do have a who's responding app that's in our information technology, but depending where you're standing in town, you may or may not receive the call. And that also becomes, how much do we ask our members to spend out of their pocket to be responding for account? Because we provide the pagers, we don't provide cell phones.
You don't pay anything for a small token?
No, the only money that they pay us is the points money out of that thirteen thousand.
So, I don't, is everybody, like, the way we're doing this, basically approving it unless we get to the end result, and we need to make cuts, then we'd start, then we start looking at, is there a possibility of cutting back in any, in any department that we've already looked at?
That seems to have worked in the past, so.
Yeah, and I presented to you a very conservative budget. So, if, it, the, right now in front of you, there's an eight percent increase in the total, but there is, and a lot of that just has to do with fixed costs and contractual obligations from our service providers that are increasing due to fuel and insurance, et cetera. But, but there is wiggle room found throughout this in sinking fund increases and insurance and potential retirement benefits. So, so, yeah, once we kind of have a full, once we have a grasp of, of every department, you can know where that room is, I think.
Do those air packs fall under the equipment reserve fund?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have more questions?
No, it's a pretty tight budget to let you lay it out here.
Okay. Thank you for coming this year.
Yeah, thank you. Who's that? Okay, oh, cool.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Two weeks, you want us to come back?
Yeah, or if, Josh, if you could touch base with Michael, maybe, after you talk to the vendor? Then we can schedule something if he's, if he's not willing to wait. Yeah.
The next, yeah, our next meeting is the Monday right after Thanksgiving break, so just so you can put it on your radar. The next scheduled, regular scheduled meeting.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, you're not going to be here.
I'll be here. I'll be back on Monday.
But if we have to do it this week?
I'll be here this week, but I'm leaving next week.
Oh, okay, I'm leaving next week. Jumping the gun. All right, so, do you want to start at the beginning?
Please, why not?
Sure.
All right. Page one. The end.
And I'll do my best to explain this to you. Another new, uh, uh, change here as well is, I'm still waiting for the yellow numbers to come in, except for unemployment. Unemployment showed up today in the mail from VLCT, so I was able to update those onto a, onto a new budget that, that we can present in two weeks from now, if there are any other changes. But I can tell you, the numbers are pretty close. We, we pay that quarterly to VLCT, and it went from fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred, uh, total. So, not a big, not a big change. So the, so the yellows could change, but I feel confident the numbers are, are pretty close. The big jump here in insurance for me is that my, my partner wants to join my plan. And, and then the retirement is based off the assumption that the board elects to, to become members of the Vermont employee, uh, Beamers. Yeah, the, the one that, the one that could be, the one that could be cut is, is, uh, Beamers. That would, that would eventually be there, because after three years, under the current plan, I'd be vested. So, uh, this is six point five percent, assuming Plan B for Beamers. But after three years in our current plan, it would be five percent, so it would be forty-eight hundred or so. That would eventually show up on our, in our general fund budget. But if we don't elect into joining Beamers, we can piecemeal that to build up to it a year.
So, if we opted out of Beamers, we're talking a twelve and a half percent increase instead of a nineteen percent increase.
And then, of course, there's the, and then, I should have mentioned this as well. There's, assuming that there's going to be a three percent in, in the entire budget for all full-time employees, assuming a three percent rate. And that's including myself and the assistant town clerk, who we pay twenty-five percent of the bill.
I feel like I checked something, but I can't find it when I'm choking to death, I need to check.
And that's a big, and that's a big factor in this, that's a big factor in this budget is retirement.
Overall?
Overall, yeah, across the board. About half the employees aren't, aren't vested into our insurance plan yet. Eventually, they will be if they stay, but they aren't now.
So if we switch to Beamers, Celia would be grandfather into the old one, correct?
Yeah. And I've spoken to her, too, about that. I mean, she's got, you know, maybe a year or two.
Right.
So she, she would be interested in joining.
Okay, so that's a potential change if we.
Currently vested, we have Kyle and, I think Kyle's the only one right now. Rob and Nick are, if they're not vested yet, they're due quick. They'll probably be due next year, so we'd want to include them.
I have to go on here.
Go for it.
I might be good for a minute or two. Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, do you want to move on to the next department?
Sure, next we have the depart, the, the town clerk and treasurer. Bigger changes here, direct labor went up, a lot of this had to do with, uh, hiring the assist, assistant town clerk. She was originally budgeted for only thirty-five hours, and through all the searches we did, could not find anybody who only wanted to work thirty-five hours. So we have her working full-time forty now, uh, thirty-five is considered full-time as well, so. So, um, Star is working forty hours, so that increased it. And we started her, um, at a couple more dollars than we had Carol at. Then the other big jump there was H and A insurance, but I do have an update on that. It's one of the reasons why I share a lot of documents with you all, because there's not a whole lot of staff to vet my work here. So I, I hope that other people can notice it, and Judy did today at a meeting. Before our regular meeting, um, H and A insurance for Celia is, so Celia's insurance is much lower than I had. For some employees, Stan had predicted, uh, worst-case scenario, so member, spouse, and child. And that's what Celia is budgeted for now. Realistically, if, if you were only going with single, she's, it's only like nine hundred and fifty a month. So if you cut that down to what her actual is now, that'll bring you down to an overall seven percent increase. It, and it actually brings her overall, um, department down to only a three percent increase. Because it reduces, it, that, that FY twenty-three, twenty-four change goes from, um, a four thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollar increase to a six thousand dollar decrease.
So say that again, what does that drop the department to?
A three percent increase overall. And, but I will say, it, it, that is a sound budgeting method. To assume that, that an employee is going to leave and the new employee that comes in is going to have a husband and kids is, is smart budgeting. Because you wouldn't want to under-budget. And then have a twenty thousand dollar deficit halfway through your, your fiscal year. So I guess I will add that, any kind of cuts in, in, uh, in insurance, there is potential risk to it.
But if we get to the bottom line and we need to cut something, I think that's where we cut, because it's not reality. That we're not budgeting for something that really is a budget item, a cost to us.
I mean, Celia was retiring halfway through the fiscal year, it would make sense to budget for that, but.
Well, I'm talking about Star.
Oh, Star, gotcha.
If she doesn't have insurance, then I don't say we budget for it.
And that's another, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't say that as well. I'm, I'm assuming that Star, who is not on our insurance now, is our, is, would, could, Star's only been here a couple months. So if she's not happy, you know, or for some reason she has to leave, um, God forbid we were to hire somebody on with a kid and a husband and, and that, and not budget for that. So that's why I've got her included, at least at the minimum. So yeah, if, if we absolutely had to take that risk, you know, we could cut it.
I think she loves us.
I think she does too. I like her, actually. She's been really helpful, she's, I was telling Judy earlier, Stan, God love him, he saved everything, but he didn't really organize it. So she, I think he used to go back into the office and just throw old packets into the drawer, where you'd just really just throw them in there. So she came up here and organized all my old, old packets for me, it was really nice. And, um, yeah, and, and I say a risk, but you do have fixed costs that are increasing. Like I said, uh, curbside pickup, um, the sheriff, those you really don't have any play with. So these, at least you've got some choice, well, lower risk or lesser impact choice.
Wiggle room.
Okay, thirty-two.
I like this one.
It's an easy one.
Yeah, that is an easy one, and, and I'm assuming her, her, uh, lease or rights services are going to increase a little bit. The way that she was presenting her, her contracts didn't, I think one of the reasons they were confusing is the time that she was presenting her contracts to us. So she really should present it, she's already kind of given us an idea for what this FY twenty-three is going to cost. So she'll just give us our con, her next contract leading up to the next budget cycle. Yeah, so this is, uh, listers, elections, and professional services.
Okay, Department thirty-five, municipal building.
Uh, one, one line on them that just almost crept over the, the two thousand mark is, is heat. That was, that's about a nineteen hundred dollar increase. And then I've, I think, I've added six hundred to the building maintenance fund. Because we, we've got a cleaner now that's going to come once a month, and that's, that's about what her budget is. She actually starts this month, which, which will leave us enough money for this fiscal year, because she's starting later in the year. But FY twenty-four, we'll need the full sixteen hundred.
Planning Committee zoning.
The only thing that worth noting here, we'll have to put it as, as a warning on, if, if the select board chooses, we'd put it, put it as a warning, uh, at, at town meeting. Is that the Planning Commission, uh, made a motion, motion, sounded like they made a motion to do it, but of course, it would have to go through the select board and, uh, the town. But the idea would be to take the, the two thousand dollars in grant applications and two thousand dollars in econo, economic development and put that into a sinking fund, um, or a reserve fund. So that that'll build up over time and just, you, you know, my idea would be, and I believe the Planning Commission's idea is, this would just be a grant match fund. The, the idea of that is, uh, they, they haven't spent the two thousand very often, uh, over the last so many years. And we do have a, a, a few grants that have popped up that look enticing, but the town doesn't have the money to make the match. Because we don't have a matching fund, so that's what this would ultimately turn into.
But you know, the old grants were grants, the new grants are, you know, our portion seems to.
Buy one, get one.
Uh, and Phil Anderson said, we never agreed on anything of the sort, why are you doing this?
Well, one of the reasons I felt was, uh, that this money, we don't use it every year, and it just washes back into the general fund, I believe.
So we would like to keep it in the, uh, by the commission where all.
Possibly use it for grants. And, and, you know.
So it was decided at a meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I think he's questioning, exactly, never was.
It wasn't, uh.
It, it recorded in the minutes of the planning session.
Yeah, motion was made.
They actually took after.
It wasn't unanimous, but, uh.
It doesn't really make any difference, it's the select board's decision to put it on as our.
Exactly, yeah.
And then I have the comments on the screen, so if anybody would like to respond to any of that. Oh, okay. Phil, are you, are you talking about the scoping study for the, for the bike pat, bike pedestrian path? Because I think we're talking about something different than that.
He can't charge us.
Yeah, he's got the opportunity there.
All right, we'll move on, and if he decides to chime in, he can. Okay, uh, Department thirty-seven, is that the next one up?
Yeah, I don't expect any of that to change.
Transfer station. The transfer box is the only thing that's.
Yeah, I'm assuming that we'll have a spring.
I did, uh, just, um, we need, uh, a sticker, something from Proctor saying we live in Proctor. I talked to Celia, she doesn't handle them anymore, you do it online or go in, in person, and it was sixty dollars. So, and then your, your disposal cost at the dump, you were weighed in, weighed out.
Oh, you mean in Rutland?
Yes.
Sixty dollars for the year?
Yes.
And you can bring anything?
No, you pay for it. As far as I know, yeah, you, you pay for it when you bring it.
But some things they take for free, don't they?
Well, hazardous waste, they, they're forced to, uh, computers, TVs, but any transfer station will take those. So I went to Hubbard's, five bucks. No permit, no nothing.
I'm just, I mentioned this to Michael, I have a hard time with the cost of Casella. Going up. I think I even jumped to that one yet, but. Sorry, we were talking about the dump, I'm like, okay, sixty bucks, a lot cheaper going to the dump, I mean.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to curbside.
Curbside, oh, we're there.
I just questioned why, I mean, I know they bump up all the time, but the bump up in curbside, the bump up in, um, recycling and a surcharge. You know, instead of just an increase in our contract, it's kind of like they're hitting us three different ways. And I know once you give somebody something, we're like the only ones around that offer this fantastic benefit, and it costs us a fortune.
And then if you are employed, I mean, then at least go down our street and pick up.
Right.
Yeah, is it the auto collector now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is one of those big increases that we're talking about, this contractual. And judging off the increase that we saw last year, and Ronnie Flatt from twenty-two to twenty-three, uh, kind of compounds upon the increase, so.
It's almost two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and the fuel surcharge, I looked at the invoice today, the fuel surcharge was about a thousand dollars. And, yeah, and I, I expect those to continue.
I would hate to, I would hate to drop recycling, but, you know, if we have to, we have to.
I mean, we're locked into this contract at this point, aren't we?
Yeah, I think we are.
I mean, we could always, we could always enter, enter a negotiate, negotiation with them, I'm sure on it. And, um, and I think, so, I, I, I threw around that, I, I've thrown around that idea in the office. I think there was some fear that if you dropped curbside recycling, it would just end up into the, uh.
Trash, and then you're going to pay for that disposal.
Yeah. I, I don't know if there's any, there's no fact to that, and it's just kind of brainstorming.
If you got rid of both of them, then.
Did we just get to pick it up off West Proctor Road or Forest property or?
The quarries.
Yeah.
Or just like the other, the crap, like the library, the falls.
Branks.
Branks.
Yeah, it's gotten worse. I don't know, I just think it's something we need to definitely think about.
Yes. Now that's a big increase to choose.
Right, highway.
Uh, so again, ins, insurance plays a role in highway, I'm assuming Matt, but Matt doesn't use our insurance now, but I'm, I'm, uh, pretending in the budget that he does. So that could come down, um, retirement could come down. And significantly, significantly, because you've got Matt and Paul, who, you know, are three years out from being vested. And, uh, you, and then you've got a big number there for diesel, gas, and oil. I, I don't see that one being played around with too much. And I, and I, I've also suggested an increase to, um, highway improvements, which is on page seven. That's an increase of, of ten thousand dollars, so originally, we've, so, and up to FY twenty-three, the town's been budgeting eighty-five thousand for paving. And I'm suggesting that move up to ninety-five thousand this year. The town has approximately twenty-two miles of highway, and every year we budget for half a mile. So if you do the math on the longevity of road surface, you could find yourself in a bad position.
Yeah.
Twenty years from now.
You could, it's starting to show up a little bit already.
Yeah. Tree removal, I think that could probably be bumped down, back, back down to eight thousand. I, I was thinking maybe we need a little bit more, but I think we had an off year. I don't think there was any tree removal the summer that I first arrived. I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that no bidding went out, because there was switching in town managers. And, and we had to make up for that season by removing a lot of trees this summer. But tree removal isn't cheap, especially for bigger ones.
Yeah.
They, they start talking, bringing cranes in and stuff, and it can. As of right now, I've got two trees on the, well, I've got three trees on the list for FY twenty-four. I don't think they'll reach ten thousand, but I'd be, I'd be willing to bet they, they'd be above five thousand, between five and eight thousand to remove. One of them's pretty big. That we had exclude off of this summer.
I remember that one. Yep.
Yep.
Highway building?
Not much will change.
Multi-path.
Oh, yeah, and again, we don't budget for these, for these capital improvement projects. They're kind of, they're, they're one and done kind of deal. So we don't want to, we don't want big fluctuations in the budget as they come and go over multiple years.
Okay, so we'll jump to police.
But can I just ask, how would we appeal for that if we hadn't received ARCA funds? I mean, we didn't know when you were receiving ARCA funds when you entered into the Deepakon project. So, when you look at when Stan had it out, there was supposed to be money being budgeted a little bit every year. And I thought at one point money had been budgeted for the Deepakon project. It's a little bit like the Green Mountain Power kind of, I mean, is that built into this budget? Because it doesn't seem like the number of legal is a viable number for that going forward.
I feel like Stan took that money out of something else, like, oh, find it where it needs to be.
No, that's not really budgeting that.
Oh, God, no, I.
That's just saying there's a bucket of money, and I need to pay this.
Right, oh, I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
That's where you're gonna operate, but there's really no reason to have.
Right.
So, yeah, so I think a responsible, most responsible municipalities have that capital improvement project funding sinking account, where they have money, where they say, these are our projects we want to complete over five years, and we can do that, because this is how much we have invested into our sinking fund, and it's just something the town, Proctor, hasn't done up to this point. And I did speak to Stan in that short turnover we had, because I was surprised when I looked at the budget and noticed, oh, how are we paying for these? And I think his expectation was we would just have to eventually take out a loan for it.
Yeah, we don't have like a contingency fund, do we? That's usually where those things, a lot of those things are unexpected to come out of. You need the money. Okay, police.
Oh, we skipped over fire, because we're down.
Already did. I feel like they put in less hours now than they used to, so I can't see it going up.
But since we had our last meeting, they've been going back up.
Yeah, it was like 87, 67.
Yeah, so I think they've responded to, to our desire to have them around more.
Yeah, this one was a lot, we see.
I feel like, unless I'm missing, because I don't, some, the reports are also different, you know, I, if you go to the backend, and it's like.
75 hours, it says. That's what this one's doing.
Yeah, and it's reflected in the, in the invoice as well.
Well, they're a little disingenuous with the streets. Like, let's say, they go down Morrison Street. No, they go in front of India's house.
Right.
They, they don't tour down all the streets. I mean.
They don't go all the way down by your house and pull a U-turn, and they come around?
Well, they mentioned in one of the reports, United Church, and I'm like, that's United Church. They said united. But it never matches up like the bottom, like warnings, tickets, the amount, because half the time I feel like I can't find where they gave a ticket. So I just, I don't know. I mean, there might be room for error there between going here and West Rutland, that all of a sudden something ends up on our.
We've seen that happen.
Plate, and it's not ours.
But to your point, I do see it kind of creeping back down a little bit. And, so, yeah, you could, you could maybe trim a little bit.
Yeah, just, yeah.
And cross.
I see the state police more than I do the sheriffs lately. They're everywhere.
Yes, they never used to be around Proctor at all.
They're here all the time.
I think they cut through on their way to Pittsburgh.
They sat a lot on, on South Street.
I've seen them at LaFong's, yeah.
They're at the Catholic church, and they're at the cemetery.
Yep. I'm sure when we leave tonight, Rutland will be at the library, waiting to catch us. They seem to be sitting there every night after leaving.
Really?
Yeah, you never noticed?
No, well, I don't go that way.
Oh, that's right, you don't go that way.
I will tonight. I'll speed by and see if they pull me. All right, streetlights.
Yeah, I'm just assuming streetlights will go up 5%. Keeps us under 2,000, just like a $1,400 increase.
Swimming pool.
Department 71, this one I, is, is our only decrease. Although I do have 3% raises for returning staff. The, the last budget proposal was under a different director. And, and Gannon's been running things pretty efficient up there. So, I, I feel confident this will work, and I, and I believe most of the lifeguards will be returning.
They grew.
So we.
Yeah, it's worth giving a raise.
Yeah, so I factored that, so I've factored that 3% in, in there.
Still 23% decrease.
Mm-hmm, and a lot of that just came from labor.
All right, skating rink.
That's a pretty easy one there. Heat went up. And that's, that's, yeah, and that's based on our new fuel cost of $3.80. Which I'd say may be conservative if you look.
The heat pump helps though, doesn't it?
Have they seen a decrease in their fuel oil use because of the heat pump?
I hope so.
Yeah, I'd have to look at past years.
Because they should be using that when it's not bitterly cold.
Right, right.
I'm trying to look, you can see they budgeted, what'd they budget for? And, and they, they budgeted 940 in '22 and spent 885. Yeah, that's interesting, because in the manager's report, I did meet, mention them, that was a representative from GMP and Efficiency Vermont. And we, we did talk about getting money to fund some of the projects we want to do here in Town Hall. And I'd have to go back and get like three years' worth of fuel data for the town. So it's something I could probably grab.
Parks.
We have, we have a strong volunteer force, so, so none of this goes up really. I've got Memorial Day just to go up 200, because in FY '22, we, we crept a little over budget. So I just kind of raised it $200 to keep up with costs and inflation. And then mosquito control.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what that's, I'll plan to go up Thursday.
Okay.
That's the tack one, but. Let me go up and see what's going on, but. I would be a bit surprised if that may go up.
They've been hitting at it all year.
Yeah, yeah, and. It, you know, it has, it has worked there.
It has worked very well, in my opinion, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I've been, know some people in West Rutland, and big difference between.
I'm just wondering if they eliminated, eliminated the.
People calling him, and they're coming in just to spray one again.
That's on the, that's on the agenda. And also people that don't want sprayed, there's a possibility that they are going to have to, you know, pay, because they have to go out and put the, the flags up, and then they gotta take them down. So there's a lot of. Extra cost for somebody that doesn't want to be sprayed. It's labor intensive.
We just have to wait and see what triggers it off.
Yes, what they give us for a price.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, if you're, if you're being sprayed on both sides of your property, it doesn't seem feasible to say you don't want it sprayed, I mean.
Plus, how would you bill them if it's municipal choice? How would you bill the resident? That seems like beyond the scope of the, you made a choice as a municipality to spray, right? And now you're gonna penalize, not me. Like, you're gonna penalize someone and say they can receive a bill because they choose not to. That seems like it, it would not even be able to be enforceable.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, you know, I consider it the, because they're generating extra work for the mosquito people.
Right, but you are not making the choice as a resident. The municipality has made the choice to spray, is what I'm saying. I, I just wonder how that organization could hold you accountable. Because as a resident, I don't have an independent, I mean, I'm exercising my independent right, right? But as a municipality, you've already overrode me and said that it's gonna happen no matter what. And now you want to penalize me because I don't want to participate. I don't know, I, I just, I think that seems like a lot of extra work for them legally, so.
Find out maybe Thursday night.
Yeah, good question.
I mean, I wouldn't want them to bill us as the municipality, because that's what they could do. They could say the contract is with the municipality, it's not with individual residents. So if we have 15 people, and it's gonna be $50 a person or whatever, I, I would just be curious if that's how they're gonna bill you.
Yeah, that'd be a good question to ask. So initially, wasn't it their idea to say, well, if people don't want to be sprayed, we won't? Wasn't it on them, not us?
But I think, I, I would almost think that that's probably gonna go into effect, and they won't come out and put the flags up.
Right. They're just gonna say, we're not gonna give you the option.
Yeah.
Well, before we go too far with this, why don't we wait and see?
Yeah, let's wait to see what comes out of the, the meeting, and they have offered to, to come and talk to us, you know.
When's their next meeting? Do you know off the top of your head, Bruce?
17th.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah. That's what I was just thinking.
Okay, library. Easy one. Taxes and assessment, Department 93.
Yeah, this is our, this is our stuff like Cedar and our annual feed of BLCT and Regional Planning Commission, county tax, regional ambulance. I don't expect any of this stuff to go up.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't ever decide on Cedar, which isn't, I think it's split up in here, isn't it?
It is, it's, uh.
Well, we have the Chamber, which has nothing, so that's okay.
Right, it's just the Rutland County Marketing.
Oh, is it under there? It's not under Riddick? Because Riddick, we have 500, and Riddick was Cedar.
Oh, yeah, we did this last year.
I know. So we could actually get rid of that one completely, the $500 one, for Rutland Economic Development.
Let me just double check.
Because Riddick and the Chamber combined to become Cedar.
And they're just asking for a ballot for residents?
Yeah, so the 1741, which we didn't decide on when they came.
And then you're probably right, and then the nine, the 975 under the Regional Planning Commission, I think is probably gonna go up to 1,000. But, you know, you're only talking a couple hundred bucks there.
So it could be a wound up. Department 99, these are all just kind of our.
Yeah, special appropriations.
Yeah, and they're pretty much all standard.
Oh, yeah. Well, they have to like petition or something.
Yeah, they do, they have to be.
I believe it's voted on at the.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's been complained about, but nobody ever says.
I know.
Well, we did talk about, when we, I mean, we stopped having real town meetings, we just had the, the presentation meeting. But we just talked about having the town vote on those individually at one point.
And some towns did.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
But I think we would have to warn that, so it wouldn't be for this year. It would be for next town meeting.
Yeah, wouldn't it take?
Wouldn't take it back until the following town meeting. So if that is something we want to do, we should think about that, because it would have to be warned as part of the town meeting.
That would make a, you know, if we had that on the ballot, each one of those.
It would make an awfully long ballot.
Yes. Yes.
A lot of write-ins, people want money in?
Write-ins were.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions on the budget as of now?
Michael, nice job.
Oh, thanks.
Yes, very nice. Easy to understand. I think that's the quickest we've ever gone through the first draft of the budget. What, what can we do about Casella's, our waste pickup? Can we talk to them? Would it be any good? That's one of our bigger, biggest increases, isn't it?
Yeah, definitely fight for it.
Yeah, and I spoke to Michael Casella at Town Fair this year. They had a ta, Casell had a table, and, and really, I talked to him about the fuel surcharge. Because that's, it's a scary, it's a scary number, if you're gonna budget for it. And, you know, he, he's just like everybody else. He just thinks fuel is gonna stay the same. But I wonder if there's opportunity for them to, to solve that problem in-house at Casella. You know, can they run trucks off of a different fuel source? And would that be the expectation of the town? Because I don't think the intent of the contract is for that, is for the town to be paying a fuel charge every single bill, every single year of the 10-year contract. So, I wonder if there's any expectations within Casella's to transform their fleet from fossil fuel to something more sustainable, cost effective.
Michael, could you reach out to them and just say, hey, we're, we're very concerned, because we're trying to keep the budget increased to a reasonable amount?
I certainly can.
Did they account for the other increases? I mean, obviously, it's probably wages and insurance, things like that, but did they give you a line item? Like, why, why they jumped up, aside from the surcharges? That's a separate.
They just follow, I've got their contract in here, it just has to do with COLA.
Yeah.
Oh, their cost of living?
Yeah.
And I, and I might have to correct myself on that, but it is some kind of. And I, and I might have to correct myself on that, but it is some kind of standard metrics. Matrix. I can certainly reach out to them.
That would be good.
And any suggestions they might have. They're, they're in the business, they know better than we do.
Well, and they do different things than just ten-year contracts, you know? Michael Casella told me that a lot of towns just have annual contracts that they renew.
We have a ten-year?
Well, the only reason we went with that is because we thought we were getting a better deal, you know? The economy didn't work out, unfortunately.
I'd like to see them towns have a contract.
They've got a big investment in the totes, so, uh, that's why that other company that you inquired on was so high, was, they were gonna have to, you know, buy the...
Is there any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Favor? He is adjourned.